Muscatine, the City Council, please come to order. We'll start the seating with a call to order by Greg.
Councilmember Lang?
Present.
Councilmember Roby?
Present.
Bynum?
Shahadeh?
Present.
Natfig?
Present.
Fitzgerald?
Present.
And Lorette?
Present.
Six present, one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Greg, and thank you so very much for joining us in Council Chambers this evening, everyone. We'll start this evening with a presentation by the Veri Development Group LLC of the Glen at Cobblestone Ridge. Greg?
Certainly. If you remember, two, three months back, Mr. Pusiteri was here to make a presentation to the City Council at an in-depth session. My understanding is that their timeframe has been moved up by the Iowa Finance Authority in order to get an application in on time. They've asked to be here tonight to speak with the City Council. We have two representatives from the Veri Group and Chris Thomas here as well. So I'd ask Mr. Pusiteri to step up to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. As I was introduced, I don't know if you recall, my name is Larry Pusiteri. I'm the co-owner of Veri Development Group. We're a developer of affordable housing. We've been around since 2006, but the Principals have been around doing development a lot longer before we joined forces in 2006. I've been involved in affordable housing development since the late '80s. What we're proposing here is pretty similar to what we showed you in September. I don't know if you recall, but we were basically in a holding waiting pattern for the state finance authority to decide what they were going to do for their new criteria for the distribution of our financing that we'll be applying for. And they have, as of today, actually, come out with their final version of what their criteria is for selection and receiving the federal tax credits. And just to briefly, before I get into the project, talk about the financing structure. The majority of residential apartment development in the country right now is led by the tax credit program. And that's a program where private investors, not individuals, but corporate investors, are able to invest into development of housing that's affordable to families that 60 percent of the area median income. And if they do that, the government gives them an assignment of credits off of their income taxes for that investment. So they make about a 4% return rate on their investment. It's all kind of government-strictured, but because of this program, there's millions of dollars of private equity investment that goes into the development of housing in the country right now. And this is the program that we've been using since the late '80s to develop housing throughout Illinois and the Midwest in general. And our most recent project that has been completed is just on the other side of the border in Monmouth, Illinois. It's similar to what we're proposing here. It's 40 units. It has a mix of single-family duplexes, small apartment buildings. And we opened it up in the summer, and we rented up the 40 units in two and a half months. There was a stampede to get into the units because part of this program requires that the investors and ourselves as developers stay in the projects for a minimum of 15 years. And so we have a huge financial incentive to do these apartments right, to make them last for at least the 15 years, and to make sure that we also operate them properly because it's not like we're going to build them as a developer and then move on, and you'll have somebody else to deal with. We would property-manage this development with our sister company, which is Urban Property Advisors, are the ones who are managing the Monmouth site and a bunch of other properties. They have several thousand of units, in fact, that they, between them and their sister companies, that they manage of rental housing. And many of those are tax credit units, but also some are market rate units as well. And so they're very experienced in property management. So what we're planning here is very similar to what you saw last time, except we have a little bit more detail. We're planning on 20 duplexes for a total of 40 units. It'll be a mix of two bedrooms, three bedrooms, and four bedrooms, predominantly three bedrooms with some twos and fours put in as well. We have the site plan here to give you a sense of the layout. And if you're not recalling where the project is, we're at the northeast corner of the Cobblestone Ridge subdivision, so this is where the subdivision is now on this side over here. So we're building, we'll be building this way. It's, the duplexes that you can see are surrounding the parking and the roadway. We're going to have two-for-one parking, two parking spots for every unit. We have in the center what we call our community space, this follows our Monmouth pattern and other projects that we've done. So we have place for a community growing garden, for vegetable garden, a flower garden. We have playground space for the kids of the residents. And we also have a clubhouse building, similar to what we have in our other projects. And in that, we're going to have the site manager's presence, so the site manager will have an office right there in the middle of everything. We'll also have a community space for the tenants to use. It's a gathering space. It'll also have a non-commercial kitchen, so if they want to have a birthday party or celebrate a holiday together, they're able to use that space as well. We'll have a computer room and other amenities as we get further along in our plans. You can have some sense of what we're looking at for the facades of the properties. We are still developing these, so please don't take these as final, but as you can see from the handouts that we gave you, we're putting in nearly $5 million in the construction of the development. At this point, we're working with the contractor that we've worked with on 13 other affordable apartment buildings, so we have a lot of experience with them, a lot of trust in them. They do not self-perform the sub-trades. I mean, the general contractor oversees the work, and they hire the local subs to do all the sub-trades. So they don't bring in their guys. They're out of Springfield, Illinois. They don't bring in their guys. They oversee the local guys who they hire and observe. To give you more specifics on who we're targeting on population-wise, the incomes can range from $26,820 for a single person to a family of six would be $44,460. And right in the middle of that, for three persons, it's $34,538 percent of the surrounding market households' income qualify for that. So we're really talking about a working-class family here. But one of the things that the state is incentivizing in their distribution of these tax credits is the use of rental assistance at the development. So typically, in our developments, we'll have a smattering of rental assistance, about 20 to 25 percent. In this case, the state is only going to, only incentivize us if we're willing to do 50 percent, at least 50 percent, which is all we want to do, rental assistance. So part of our plan for the development is that 50 percent of the units will also have rental assistance, and that those will then be affordable to people. Again, we'll have the same income targeting, but it'll be affordable to people that they will pay 30 percent of their incomes, no matter what those incomes are, as the rent, up to a market rate maximum. So if they're in excess of, if 30 percent of the rent is in excess of what they would normally pay for the units in the building, then they don't go higher than that. That's still the maximum that they would have to pay. And there is one correction I want to make in the handout that we gave to you. We gave you our basic sources and uses, and if you go look at the preliminary project sources, you'll see that they don't add up anywhere near to what we say they will. We left out a zero on the tax credit investment, so it says $580,000. It's really $5.8 million. So there'll be $5.8 million investment from the local community, and then if you add up the other numbers, then it adds up to the proper total, so we apologize for that. So as you can see, the real dynamic in the project, the big funding mechanism is the tax credits. It's a very competitive process. The state fooled us a little bit. They moved up their application process one month, so we're in a tighter timeframe than we thought we would be when we came in September. So February 3rd, we think, is going to be their deadline. So what we would need is everything all lined up in terms of that. So today, we met with local lenders, who we're hoping will be the lenders on the project. We also sent out flyers to 110 of the neighbors in immediate vicinity, give them a sense of what the project was in some detail. We invited them to come out and meet with us if they were interested. I'll be honest, it wasn't heavily attended, but at least we had discussion with a couple of neighbors. And what we're seeking from the town is part of the incentive in the competitive process for the tax credits. And again, tax credits are the engine that's driving this train in terms of moving development forward, is that they want to see local participation. And so the greater the local participation, the more points we get in the competitive scoring system at the state level in order to get the project funded, funded meaning assigned the tax credits. So what we're seeking from the village is some assistance, financial assistance, in the area of several hundred thousand dollars. There's some flexibility on our end and your end in terms of how you would structure that if you were willing to make that commitment. It can be TIF dollars, and it could be fee waivers, it could be other revenue sources that you see, whatever the combination is that works best. But we need that to complete the budget, and we also need that in order to be competitive at the state level. So that's part of our request. We also are looking for an endorsement letter. It can be from the mayor, but, you know, obviously, the presumption would be that the mayor is acting with the will of the council, and that would basically just say that, in fact, we are, you're aware of the project and supportive of the project. And then, of course, we'll want confirmation of proper zoning, which we're confident we have, and we're going to design and work with your staff to achieve that zoning, but we'll also need a letter from the city saying that we have the proper zoning for what we're planning to build. And that's the short version. We're working with Dick Yarrington in terms of securing the rental assistance. He's been very supportive of the project, and he's awaiting kind of the will of the council, and if it turns out you feel this is a project you're interested in supporting, then we'll move forward with him in processing the paperwork on that part of the development. So I'm guessing there's things I've forgotten to say, but I'm glad to take your questions and go into more depth about it.
Council questions?
Well, question for Greg. Is this, would this be kind of a new departure for us to consider TIF money for?
For residential?
Residential.
Well, the city has not done a residential TIF prior to tonight. However, this is most likely, or technically, a commercial development, because I believe the Development Group maintains ownerships and rents to the tenants, similar to the condos or apartments that were approved out at the mall complex. So that's technically a commercial project as well, and would qualify for the city's basic program of a 50-year, excuse me, 50-year, 50 percent and 10-year commercial TIF. But the apartments or condos are the only other housing project that I'm aware of. Steve, is that correct? That's correct.
Would this be taxed as a commercial property, or would it be taxed as a resident, under the residential rollback?
My understanding is that it would be taxed as a commercial development if it's a rental.
I will defer to your local knowledge. It is going to be rental, if that's the question, yeah, 100 percent rental.
After the 15-year period, could the rental rates be increased, or is?
No, actually, the income and rent restrictions are for 30 years. After 15 years, the investor is allowed to leave the project, and so we would presumably take over the ownership on a sole basis at that point. So that's what the 15-year deadline means, but it's 30 years affordability.
Further questions, Council?
I will make a couple comments here. First of all, thanks for the presentation here. If you recall, in September, I believe you have a consensus here for letter of support at that time. But today, here, talking about a financial aid from the city and taking the status, financial status of the city here, I have to say probably I will not be in support of that whatsoever. I think the tax dollars here in the city can be utilized for something that we need here in the city, for our safety and security, and some other things that we can spend these funds. And you're talking about a few hundred thousand dollars here. I don't know if you're talking about 200,000 or 900,000 here. You didn't have a specific number that you provide to us here. But, excuse me, overall, as I listen here and where I stand, I think we can give a letter of support for the project, but when it comes to financial aid, I will be in decline for that. So, thank you.
Just to respond to how much we're asking for, it's based on, the points we get at the state level are based on a percentage of the project cost, and so as we refine those project costs, they kind of, it changes the answer, but we're looking at around the 4 percent contribution level, which is in the $300,000 area.
Thank you.
Give or take.
Anyone else, Council? Jerry?
I guess I'd like a better understanding of the tax credit equity. Do you have to pay some of that back? How does that work?
So the state assigns the project, the tax credit equity, based on the level of expenses that we have, up to a cap that they have. And then we then have what it is, so say we, I'm going to give you a best guess on the numbers, okay? So say we were assigned $800,000 from the state, which is their maximum, then we are then basically given $800,000 of federal income tax credits. It's dollar-for-dollar, not deductions, times each of 10 years, so it's really $8 million worth of credits they've given to us. Those credits cannot really be used by individuals. They're very limited how much individuals, so you need to have a corporate investor who has a strong federal tax liability purchase those credits. And in fact, what's happened is, since this has been around for 20 years, sometimes it's an individual investor, and oftentimes it's a bank that's purchasing these, but more usual now is that they jump into investor pools together that are syndicated, and then they invest in multiple projects, so all the risk is spread off a million ways, so that they're not assigned to an individual project. It's, they're assigned to a pool that's assigned to a variety of projects. But any case, then we go to the syndicator, we say we have $8 million of tax credits, and we say, what price can we get as an investment to the project for that? And right now, the number is somewhere in between, in the 80s, so 80 cents on the dollar, 85 cents on the dollar. So then, if we had $8 million, and we got 80 cents on the dollar, they'll say, fine, we will take those credits from you, and we will give you $6.4 million for your development. In this case, we calculate it at $5.8 million. And so we will then get that money as we do the project as an investment. In year 15, the investors have received their tax credits. They get it spread out over 10 years, and then they also are collecting depreciation from the project. They've gotten their return, so as an investment for them, they got $8 million of tax credit savings, income tax credit savings. They've got all the depreciation for 15 years, and maybe they've earned something like a 4.5 percent return on their money, and they typically will just leave in year 15, and then we will continue to operate and run the project.
What if there's a default in the process?
So the investors, they put in some of their money at closing, so they're not going to walk away because they have very big difficulty in recovering that. There's guarantees that are provided by the contractor during the construction process to prevent that. And the tax credit program, again, being around since the late '80s, actually has the lowest default rate in the, out of any type of real estate in the country, be that commercial, retail, residential, condos, apartments, it's the lowest default rate. So it's, there's, everybody's tied up in terms of everybody, in terms of us guarantees in the project and stuff, so if it defaults, you know, it'll be a lot of lawsuits, but since there's a $5 million, $6 million investment by the tax credit investors, basically, they would find somebody else to take over the project, and they would remain in the project because they don't get their tax credits from the government unless they remain in for those full 15 years.
So the investors have the tax credit as well as the depreciation?
That's right, and any interest deductions as well.
Well, it's a really good investment, I presume, for them.
Yeah, when you look at, you know, there are options on treasuries is 1.5 percent versus a 4.5 percent return here. Yeah, there's a lot of activity now.
I guess I'd just, I won't be here to vote when the time comes, but this is asking the city for quite a bit. And I don't know if we can afford that. I'm just not sure that's the way the city should go. But the idea is meritorious. There's no question about what you want to accomplish. Otherwise, I also wonder, as we keep adding more and more apartments, since the city isn't growing, doesn't that create more and more vacancies in apartments around? It's just something I wonder about, if that doesn't happen. I know right now it seems like there are still requests for the Section 8, there's a waiting list, but there can be a saturation point in doing that.
Yeah, to talk about the market, so we'll have to have a professional market study prepared by a third-party provider that will show, that would demonstrate the need, and if it were, if there was a feeling there would be inadequate desire for the apartments from the market, then the project wouldn't move forward.
Thank you.
Diane?
Yeah, since you were discussing this 15 years, and you're allowed to leave, the investors, they're allowed to sell out their investments after 15 years?
That's correct.
And then who becomes, is whoever they want to?
Well, there's two things that could happen. We'll have, we'll be negotiating a first option, so Veri Development, so we're going to want to keep that property, and so we would be able to take from them whatever we've pre-negotiated as a price. So we'll say, all right, we're going to have an appraised value at that point, and we will value the investor's share, I'm making up numbers here, at 60 percent, and the Veri's at 40 percent. So if we give them the 60 percent value to buy them out, then we continue to own and operate the property. If we come into year 15, and we say, you know what, we don't think we want to pay you the 60 percent, we can't pay you the 60 percent, whatever, then the project could be put up at market for sale, but the restrictions don't go away, so there's still another 15 years of affordability, and we would try and see whether the investors could recover their money through a market sale. If they aren't able to recover that, then their choice is to stay in or walk away, and, you know, either way, it doesn't really affect us as the owner in terms of what happens financially.
Is that okay, Mayor? Another question. The condition of the property is a concern of mine, that after you've got income-based housing, I'm not judging here, but they, these are no garages, is that correct? Just outdoor parking?
Yes, it's all street parking.
On-street parking. That likely sometimes the income-based housing, it could become tacky in appearance. And how do you address that issue? How is it, I don't know how long the Monmouth property has been?
It just opened up this summer.
Oh, well. Had time.
Yeah. So we are obligated financially to remain in the partnership for 15 years, so were we to let it run down, it would have severe financial consequences for us as developer. Also, there's covenants in our agreement with the investors that we have to maintain it at a certain level, so they'll be inspecting the property on a regular basis, they get our monthly reports and incident reports if there are any, and just quality upkeep. In addition, because everybody knows there's a 15-year time horizon for this development, there's a number of reserves that are set up upfront, including a replacement reserve that's capitalized, and then we make monthly contributions to it, so that we're building up money, so that if, you know, the roof goes back and goes bad on Unit 13B and we're out of warranty, we already have the money set aside to make that repair, and we don't have to wait till we get enough income to make that happen. So this, because of the tax credit program's involvement, the project is really more inspected than anything you would imagine. So, for example, during construction, the lenders will have an inspector, the state will have an inspector, we'll have an inspector, and the investors will have an inspector. So you'd have to have a super clever contractor to do anything on the cheap.
Called bureaucracy, sir.
Yeah, that's right.
Another concern I have in our community, and I'm not opposed at this time, I don't know where the money's going to come from, again, but like Jerry, I won't have a vote here next month, but I am very concerned, always have been, in our community in taking care of the empty buildings that we already have, empty rental properties and homes, that I've always, Steve Boca four years ago, or three years ago, talked to him about, we need to develop some kind of initiative in order to find, to get empty homes or rundown homes repaired, back on the taxes, tax rolls, and give those people an incentive for fixing up property A, B, or C. So that's, I'm not opposed to new, and new ideas for our community, but I really think we need to work on improving the things that we've already got that don't look so great in Muscatine, and our entryways and appearances. That's my opinion.
Thank you very much, Diane.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I came to the meeting tonight still thinking there was a five-point, or about a $6 million gap in your.
Again, I apologize for that.
So there's really not a lot of time here to digest all this. I mean, it appears to be a proven methodology for financing these kinds of projects, and that's good. However, I tend to think that priority-wise for our TIF, available TIF funds, that I think a higher priority would be the, those that are of a job retention or job creation, the more traditional application for TIF money, so that's just what I'm thinking right now. And again, and the other part of it is, I didn't realize, you know, maybe we're supposed to be making some sort of a decision tonight, and I realized that that's, or at least you're up against a deadline where...
Yeah, we're looking for an indication of what direction you're going, so your comments are very helpful, so we can decide, you know, whether we're likely to be able to move it forward or not.
Okay, well, if I had to decide tonight, I would, I couldn't be supportive, just for the reasons I just said.
Right, I hear you.
Anybody else, Council?
Are these, are these individual, you said they're like three-bedroom, four-bedroom, are there two apartments in each building?
Yes, they're all duplexes.
They're all duplexes?
Uh-huh.
So are these, and I go back to the, are they apartments? Are they townhouses? Are they condos? What are the, what's the, what are you putting in your documentation that they, that they are? Because that makes a difference with the tax code and whether they're residential or commercial.
So we would typically list them as apartments. I think they would also qualify under the townhome definition, since they have separate entrances and just a shared party wall. Looking to Joanna Vargas also from our office, who a lot better at the construction than I am.
So separate entrances, common wall construction?
That's right.
More like a condo or a townhouse?
Exactly.
Okay.
But they'll all be rental.
And just to clarify, if we were to proceed and utilize tax increment financing and put an agreement, rebate agreement together, we could certainly include protections for the city in that, in that agreement.
Well, the amount of money, the amount of money you would get or have available would be vastly different unless the legislature does something with commercial properties this next session, with the residential rollback versus a commercial at 100 percent.
Right.
The TIF dollars is basically cut in half when it goes to residential, so...
There's things that we could do, like a minimum assessed value if you chose to proceed. And just to be clear on the process, if, from a TIF perspective, this area is not in a TIF district, so one, we would have to extend the TIF district, and then two, we'd have to enter into a rebate agreement in order to, if we were to fund this project through tax increment financing. And those would be new tax dollars, new increment, so that it would not affect our current TIF dollars. Those would all be new tax dollars, rebate it typically at 50 percent, half to the city would retain, and half would go to the developer.
Further questions, Council?
No. I'd just point out, basically, that I agree with the assessment that Councilman Shahadeh gave, that... Shada gave, that I would not be interested in setting a precedent for TIF funding for a residential project on this. Just looking at the, the breakdown of where the money's coming from, it seems like there's a lot of money coming from tax credits and other government programs. Anyway, I'd like to see a little more private investment in this. But otherwise, the other four items with the letter of support and the letter stating that it's in compliance with the other issues, I don't have a problem with.
Okay. You're looking for a consensus of approval to move forward with this project?
Well, I think Mr. Puceterio was looking for some kind of consensus on whether or not, I don't know if he needs, has what he needs, but, and I don't know what your headlines are.
But it's a little confusing to me in terms of, so there's a new council that's going to actually vote on this, or how's, when is your transition?
Basically.
Sure. The, we have a new council effective January, we have three new members that would be coming on tonight, is an in-depth session. Council can take action at a regular session, but of course, we would have to develop a rebate agreement that the council could act on. They would also have to act on extending the TIF boundaries, the district boundaries. And that would be acted on at a later date.
Right. So just to give my reaction to what you're saying, I appreciate your directness, that's exactly what we're looking for here. So I'm getting a sense that, a fairly clear sense, that this is not something you'd want to fund. So what we'll do is, we'll go back, and part of it is, we don't have time to sort of like revisit it and so on several times now because of, you know, the February 3 deadline. So we'll go back and we'll do our scoring to see whether, you know, with the loss of these points, whether we still think it's feasible, whether there's another way to fill this gap. And then, you know, if we think we can move it forward, then we would, you know, work with Greg and go to your next meeting and so on, and solicit those other letters or... But at this point, I'm, it's probable that we won't be able to move forward with it. It's just a fiercely competitive process, and whether or not, you want to argue about whether we need the money, we need the points, that's not really debatable. And so unless we hear a wave of change of mind, or the new councils are calling us and saying, please come in, we'll let you know if things change, but it's not likely to move forward. Just want to be straightforward with you.
Again, you're looking for a consensus, show of hands?
No, 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 we're good.
You're okay as you are?
He's got, he's got.
Right now, you've got two.
Yeah, pretty much everybody spoke, right?
Well, you got that, but we still could use a consensus. You don't need one, we'll move on.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your presentation. Okay, counsel, the next item on tonight's agenda is a Blue Zones Project presentation. Mary O'Dell.
Thank you, Mayor, and with me tonight, I have Bill Phelan from the Chamber and Gary Carlson from HNI. We really are trying to answer five specific questions for you this evening. The first one is, really, what is a blue zone? Second, why is it important for Muscatine? Third, who is involved? Fourth, what next steps do we need to take? And then finally, what do we really, what are we really hoping from you as council members and from the city? I think Bill's going to start here.
Thank you, Mary. I'm Bill Phelan from Muscatine Chamber of Commerce, but I am representing the Blue Zone Task Force Committee for this presentation this evening. I'm going to do a little bit more reading than I usually do, so I apologize for having my head down, but I want you to understand kind of the basics from which the blue zone comes from. So we're here to ask for your, to give you understanding about the blue zone process and how that works. So as most of you probably already know, on August 10th of 2011, just this past fall, Governor Branstad announced a plan to make Iowa the healthiest nation, the healthiest state in the nation by the year 2016, and as measured by the Gallup Healthways Well-Being Index. Long, big story, but I have that index report here, too. The Healthiest States Initiative is a privately-led, publicly-endorsed effort that will engage citizens throughout the state to improve their overall health and well-being. According to the Gallup study that I showed you, and I can provide copies, and they're also on the Blue Zone website, Iowa currently ranks as the 19th healthiest state in the nation. Although that puts Iowa in the top half, it's still not really good enough, and certainly gives us a lot of room for improvement. The Gallup Healthways Well-Being Index is the first-ever daily assessment of U.S. residents' health and well-being. This index gathers the community's data on life evaluation, physical health, emotional health, health behavior, work environment, basic access to development, and prioritizing strategies to help the communities thrive and grow. Today, Iowa scores well on emotional health, physical health, and access to basics such as life, or safe surroundings, financial resources, strong community, and healthcare services. But where we fall short is in the area of healthy behavior, such as exercise and eating habits, and as well as improving overall work environments. Those are the areas that we really fall short and we need the most work on. In order for Iowa to reach the goal of being the healthiest state in the nation by 2016, the Blue Zones Project has been created. The Blue Zones Project is a collaboration between Wellmark Blue Cross and Blue Shield, Healthways, and Hy-Vee to help make Iowa number one in the nation using the Gallup study. What in the world is a blue zone? There are places in the world where people live healthy, happy lives, well into their 90s or even 100s. These places have been dubbed "blue zones" by the National Geographic Research Dan Buettner, who further says that these longevity hotspots share nine lifestyle habits he calls "the power nine," that are responsible for their remarkable results. For example, Dr. Buettner goes on to say that you can't blame your parents for some of your health problems. His research has shown that about 75% of how long we live and our chances of suffering from heart attacks, diabetes, and certain cancers is determined simply by our behavior. By adopting the power nine philosophy that he's developed, we can transform our well-being and increase our longevity of life. A number of communities around the United States have used this research to develop tools and programs to help their citizens live longer, happier lives, with lower rates of chronic disease. The Blue Zones findings have received national media attention on such shows as Oprah Winfrey, Good Morning America, Anderson Cooper 360, and the ABC Nightly News. To be considered to receive the Blue Zone designation, a very demanding and thorough application process is required by the entire community, you included. The Muscatine Blue Zones Task Force, of which you're hearing from several representatives tonight, has been working diligently for the past several months, early September it started, to meet the deadlines and schedules to complete the necessary requirements to be considered for a Blue Zone designation. The application is due January 4. You're going to hear a lot more from Mary O'Dell, but I would invite Gary Carlson to come up and talk to you about the importance of the project to Muscatine.
Thanks, Bill. Again, I'm Gary Carlson, and I'm representing HNI Corporation, and I'm one of the members of a number of the corporations that are working on the Blue Zones application. And so why is it important to Muscatine? Well, it's important to Muscatine, obviously, for the health of all of our citizens, to try to have us all be more active and to pay more attention to our health, but it's also from the practical standpoint of the economic vitality. As you know, as also overseers of budget with the city and the large amount of employers that the city employs, as well as the county and the school district and the hospitals and certainly all the employers in town, that providing healthcare coverage is a very expensive part of the compensation system, and much of those costs are driven by healthcare claims. And clearly, behavior does have a huge impact on the quality of health of not only the people that work for the companies, but also the vast majority of the people they cover, which are dependents. And so from a practical standpoint on the, from the business community, we're looking at trying to organize together to work on improvement, wellness programs, health programs, sharing best practices, getting that support, getting active members in our community to utilize many of the wonderful facilities we have, trails, parks, activities, the Y, all of those type activities, to get people more in tune with a healthy lifestyle and making healthy behavior changes. You will be pleased to hear tonight that we're not asking for funds from the city for this project.
Thank you.
But what we are, I thought you just hit the punchline early. But what we are going to be asking for is the support, the application for the Blue Zones Committee. And some of you will remember when we did Vision Iowa programs and we did community attraction grant programs, that they have certain parameters in the application process, and they're asking, for any community that might be considered, they're asking for some very prescriptive things that have to be committed, such as, and one of those is from the city council, and asking for at least 75% of the city council members to sign a pledge to be supportive of that. So it's not, it's not a big investment in your time to be able to do that. But it is, it is really a public declaration that the city also supports, that this is something as a community that we think it makes a great deal of sense to do. Part of the requirements also in the application is that the community will support, financially support some people to be active in leading these endeavors and to have office space, to have, have meetings that keep activities moving forward. We believe, as a committee, we have secured qualified people, then we can support them being assigned to work on those kind of projects. So I believe we will have a wonderful story to tell in our application, and I think it for, I speak for many of us that are working on, Jeff Camfield's here with Hy-Vee. Jeff's been, has spent a lot of time on this, and Hy-Vee has a tremendous support of this project, that we have the opportunity to put together a very, very strong application and be considered one of these cities. The more notoriety that we get as a city, the more notoriety we get about positive things, obviously are helpful if we were able to really make a significant change in health and, and we're able to drive down healthcare costs for all of our citizens. It is also going to make the community a more desirable location, not for current businesses to expand, but for other businesses to consider. So as often is my case, I think of it from an economic development perspective, as, as much as the fact that it's hard to argue with, with everybody enjoying better health. So I'm going to turn it back over to, to Mary to talk a little bit about what's next, but I could tell the anguish in your eyes about whether we're going to ask for money, I just couldn't resist getting you off the hook early.
I want to mention a little bit more who else also is involved. Jeff Camfield is here from Hy-Vee, but also Bob Albee from Muscatine Community College is one of our task force members, Bill Decker from the school district, Jim Hayes from Trinity Muscatine, along with myself from Trinity Muscatine Public Health, Rosemary Bosin from United Way, Mark Lofgren, who's our state representative, Brett Olson from the Y, Diane Robey from City Council, as well as Andrew Fangman from the city, Gary Weiscamp from the CIAT group. So we, we feel like we have a very broad task force that worked initially on this project, but those few people aren't enough. So we broadened our, our group on November 17. We had a community meeting, and we were looking for co-chairs for a number of initiatives in the, in the community, and so we have another 20 or 30 co-chairs of specific initiatives such as workplace wellness and trails, walking school, plus different, different initiatives that we are going to work on in the community, but that still is not enough. We also need the broad grassroots effort of everyone in the community, or majority of the people in the community. And one way to be part of that grassroots effort is to pledge that Muscatine is your community and you would like to see Muscatine as a blue zone community and move forward. And I know the city website has a little icon, that if you go to the Muscatine city website, you can just click on the blue zone icon, and you can pledge that you would like Muscatine to be a blue zone community, and it asks you if, to do a few things to improve your personal health. So that is one way that everyone can be a part of this initiative. So really, what, what are the next steps? We, we started by, actually, a number of you may have started with kind of a awareness-raising effort with the Start Somewhere Walk, and that was a couple months ago, so I know there were over 25 different walks in our Muscatine community. I know the city had, had one of those walks, as well as the Chamber and many, many businesses and industries. We then sent in our statement of interest, and 84 communities across the state of Iowa sent in statements of interest. And from those initial statements of interest, 58 communities were selected to submit a full application, and Gary talked a little bit about that. There are only 20 questions to the application, but we, we want to be very thorough and really articulate why Muscatine is unique, why, why we, rather than the other 57 communities, would be, would be an ideal site to be a blue zone. From those 58 communities, up to 10 communities will be selected as finalists, and during the end of February, early March, those 10 or so communities will have site visits. And from those finalist communities, initially, three or four communities throughout the state of Iowa will be selected as the initial communities to move forward with the Blue Zone principles. So we would like to be one of those three or four. We certainly want to be in, in the 10 finalists, so we have a lot of work to do, but I think our community is unique, and I think we're ready for this, and we do have a few support things that we, we are looking for. And again, Gary alluded to those. Some of the things in the application are prescriptive, and letters of support are one of the things that are required. If we do not have 75% of the city council in support of this, we might as well not submit our application because that is required. Mayor support is required. City manager support is required. The support of the top five industries in the community are required. Public health support is required. Media support is required. Am I missing any? School board, school district support is required. So, am I missing anything? Bill?
What I'm doing is passing around the commitment letter that we would ask you to consider signing. I'll just read you a couple points of it. It says, "By signing below, I agree to be an active, engaged leader in the Blue Zones Project. I am committed to transforming my community into a place where some of the healthiest, happiest, and most productive people live. I believe that becoming a Blue Zones community will positively engage and impact my community." And you'll read down there, they cover a different, a few different points. You heard Mary talk about the importance that the entire community needs to be engaged. I would hope they'd be engaged, it certainly is, for all of our benefits, all of our, both current and future generations, need to be healthier. So we would ask that you'd consider signing those, and I'd be happy to pick those up after the meeting this evening. Thank you very much.
Questions, counsel, anyone? Thank you very much, Bill. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mary, thank you very much.
Just encourage everybody to go to thebluzone.com, right?
Actually, the, the website is bluzonsproject.com, but an easier way maybe to go to the city website. That's a very easy website to get to, and there's an icon there. You click on the icon, and it brings right up the pledge page. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mary. Everybody? All right, we'll move right along. The next item, Ridley Theater's presentation and request... The next item, Fridley Theaters' presentation and request. Greg, we'll start with you.
Thank you, your honor. We have three representatives tonight from Fridley Theaters. We have a presentation for the city council. With really out any further ado, I'm certainly going to ask you to step up the microphone and introduce yourselves and please proceed with the presentation.
I have a couple of handouts here. Pass along. I apologize that we're not able to supply these beforehand. I was working on them up until this afternoon yet. We have enough down there. Got a few extra if anyone else would like some.
A good one, huh?
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council members for putting us on the agenda tonight and allowing us come to speak with you. The goal of this presentation is basically to begin a dialogue with the city about potentially putting a new theater within the city limits. What I'm hoping to do is kind of explain to you guys what we would like to do. We'll show you some renderings. This is a plan that we've been working on for a couple of years for either Muscatine or other locations that we have. It's a real neat opportunity. There's nothing like this currently in Iowa, the plan that we're putting together here. And we'll just kind of go along. Well, first I should introduce myself. And Brad, if you want to go to the next slide, I apologize, I don't have my laptop right here. But I'm Russ Van Orsdale and I oversee the operations for Fridley Theaters. Our other representatives today, Brad Ramer, he's our director of project and technologies, and Brian Fridley. Go ahead and go to the next slide. For those of you that not know Fridley Theaters in any way, shape or form, I figured I'd give you a little bit of history. First off, Fridley Theaters is a family-owned company. Brian Fridley is our vice president. His father, Bob Fridley, is the owner and president. Bob purchased his first theater in New Sharon, Iowa in 1940. And since that time, we've continued to grow. At one point in time, we were operating 35 locations throughout Iowa and Nebraska. Since then, we've put an emphasis and a focus on some of our larger projects. We've ended up selling a few of our single screen locations and we've also donated some of those situations to the city so they can continue to have those theaters within their communities. Currently, we're operating 21 theaters throughout Iowa and two in Nebraska, total of actually 95 screens. We've been operating in Muscatine since 1982, so 30 years almost, either downtown at the Riviera where actually Brad got his start, or out at the mall. Below is a list of a bunch of the communities that we're in throughout Iowa and Nebraska. You can go to the next slide for me, Brad. Our goal, first and foremost, Fridley's primary goal is to build a new theater in Muscatine. Like I said, this would be a one-of-a-kind theater in the state of Iowa. We're looking at plans and we'll show you plans of a 10-plex. This will be a state-of-the-art luxurious theater. It'll include fully digital projection, wall-to-wall screens, 7.1 digital sound, stadium seatings, large stadium decks, comfortable seating. We're looking into some leather chairs or faux leather chairs. The other aspect of this project that is what's particularly interesting and different in the state of Iowa is we're looking into VIP auditoriums. These auditoriums would be even nicer seating availabilities, and I'll show you an example of that. It'll also be an opportunity for adults to go to the movie. It'll be kind of a, those auditoriums will be a kid-free zone. The rest of the theater, the other eight auditoriums can have families and kids, but these two auditoriums would be for 21 and older. And the reason we'd be doing that is that we'd be offering food and there would also be the opportunity of beverage service in their adult beverages as well. The other thing that's really exciting about this project too is we'd be introducing a big-screen auditorium. Within this area, there is an IMAX that's approximately, I believe it's 60-foot wide. We're proposing an auditorium that will be 63-foot wide by 33-foot tall. So it'll be a one-of-a-kind viewing experience in this area. Go ahead, Brad. Secondary in our goals is to create a multi-screen theater complex that creates a destination for the city of Muscatine. Not only are we, like I said, our main goal is to build the theater and bring a new theater to Muscatine. Secondary would be commercial development for businesses that would complement, or complement a movie theater. We have purchased land on the corner of the bypass and Mulberry. And we would not need all of that for our theater operations. What we had hoped to do is then be able to develop some of those outlots for restaurants, professional services, whatever else the market would dictate. Oh, gzu not. The reason we kind of picked these, obviously a restaurant complements a theater, entertainment, whatever they would be. Professional is something that we've considered as well because during the day, the professional and their needs for parking would be during the day. And for us, our needs are during the evening. So we see that as a potential complementary business with us. The other advantage and goal is to create some more jobs. Obviously, a four-plex that we operate in the mall currently, I think we have 15 employees. A facility of this size, we have a nine-plex in Ankeny. We have 30 employees. This would end up having a kitchen and, like I said, a small lounge, and we'll look at some of those. But this would be a project that would be more than that. We'd probably be 30 to 40 jobs. Of those, probably be about 10 to 12 full-time equivalents and then a lot of jobs for high school and college aid students. Not only those sustaining jobs and continuing, but then there'd be considerable amounts of jobs in subcontracting to local in building this. And I believe Brad was sharing some numbers with me earlier, depending on who we choose with the general contractor. But in talking to one general contractor, they had told us that at any given time, there could be, what, as many as 20 different subs working with five to seven employees on each sub. So we're looking at potentially 100 to 150 temporary jobs in the construction. Now we'll get into some of the, the proposed site layouts and some of the renderings. This is the parcel that we have. We've been working with our civil engineers and kind of come up with this plan for the theater and how it may sit there on the bypass, the appropriate parking, the outlots that would be on the corner that would be, I would think, very worthwhile for a restaurant or other professional services. It'd be very noticeable. That would be phase one. I don't know if, let me see if I can get this to work here. Phase one would be this area and then potentially create some other professional or restaurants and another lot down here that could be used for something as well. And the goal of this is, you know, to help us potentially offset the cost of this project because it will be a pretty expensive project for us to undertake. Hopefully, we'd have some people that would be interested in some of these outlots to help us with that. Go ahead to the next slide, Brad. This is exterior elevation, concept drawings. Just kind of gives you an idea of what, and it's not 100% obviously, but this is what we were working with our architects. But that kind of shows you the outside of the building. As we've been planning some of these other projects throughout the state of Iowa, we've kind of looked at this palms theme as kind of a getaway, as a retreat. You know, that's what the movies are. It's, it's getaway from real life sometimes and you just have the opportunity. And this is what we are kind of trying to potentially bring about with not this, only this facility, but some other ones have a few Fridley, or the palms Fridleys. And you can see that with the palm trees and then inside the oasis lounge, things like that. But that gives you an idea of the exterior. Go ahead, Brad. This is just kind of a quick mock-up of what the first level floor plan, it's kind of hard to see there and I've got copies here and I can get larger copies if anybody would like on, upon request. But it kind of shows you the outline. We're, we're looking at 10 auditoriums. Over here is the big-screen format that I discussed. That's a 299-seat auditorium. These would be the VIP auditoriums with kind of the plush seating. And you can see the lounge area that's in between the VIP. The other eight auditoriums would be regular theater auditoriums, but when I say regular, that may not really do it justice because it'll be nicer than anything that we've currently done and certainly than what we have here at this point. Second level is the next slide. Just kind of gives you an idea of what the, oh, I'm sorry, just the arrow back up. That's the mezzanine level, shows you our projection booth and kind of shows the stadium seating going up a little bit further. The third slide, or the next slide is a little bit more of a cut-in and shows kind of the lounge area and the schematic that we have at, the concessions and the concession support Now we get to some of the more fun stuff, some of the renderings that our architects have worked. This is, as you're entering in, I'd kind of showed you the, the VIP area and the large screen. In between those would be this entrance to the bar lounge area and then into the VIP area. But we're not, we're not looking to do anything big here. We're just looking for an opportunity for people to come to the movie before, afterhand, maybe have a beverage. We'll have a small kitchen that will service the whole facility, but we'll definitely be servicing the lounge area and those VIP auditoriums. But you can come beforehand, have a beverage, talk about the movie, or maybe even sit there afterwards and discuss, you know, Hugo or whatever the most, the next Academy Award movie may be. The next slide gives you a little bit of a more interior design, but this is, this would be a look at the lobby and to the concession area. So kind of like you'd be walking in the front doors. This is kind of what you'd see. To the left is that auditoriums 133, that would be the VIP and the big screen, a large concession stand with many options. Behind that and that concession support would be the small kitchen that would be servicing 12 to 15 items, a little seating area in the lobby, and then entrance into auditoriums. The next slide is a rendering of the big-screen auditorium. It'll be pretty nice. It'll be 299 seats is what we're planning. And in that, a wall-to-wall screen. It'll be very, very large and immerse you in the experience of the theater. Next slide is one of the VIP auditoriums. You can see that the seating's just a little bit different here. We'll be working on that and what we want to do exactly. But it's going to be more spacious. You're going to have larger seats. You're going to have a lot more room in between. So if you like to be comfortable, this is your opportunity to be comfortable. If you'd like to see a movie, potentially without some of the distractions of some of our younger guests, this will be your opportunity. They'll be, let's see, I think we've got them at 72-seat auditoriums approximately, but there'll be quite a bit of room. The next slide shows you one of the options that we're looking at, kind of as VIP seating. Large overstuffed chairs, a little, almost kind of reminds me, but a lot more durable of a, a school desk where you can be able to have your basket of food and your beverage there. And if you so choose, you can pull up the armrest and snuggle with your wife or husband. Next, well, how do we achieve these goals? In order to continue to move forward with this, and that's why we're here today, is to begin the dialogue and the conversations with the city, Greg, Steve, Chamber. In that original site plan slide, most of, if you arrow all the way back up, I'm sorry, Brad, that's a little ways up, but at least I can kind of show this. What we're asking for is voluntary annexation. All of this is within city limits, but I believe this little corner over here, and I'm not quite for sure if it's that dotted line or if it's more over in this area, is county. And for us to be able to use all of that, we would like it within the city. We'd also request consideration for zoning in this case. I'm not exactly for sure. I think we were having some debate on what it is currently zoned, but what we would need it to be, or what we're requesting it to be is S3, which would be a continuation of the 120 acres that's currently across Mulberry. We'd also request the potential of future subdivisions. You know, like I said, first off, we want to get the theater. We want to get that built. But if we do have people that are interested in developing those outlots, then they're going to have to be subdivided. We'd also request the opportunity of having an adoption of tax increment ordinance. So there might be an opportunity to help us fund this. And we'd also ask for assistance with the cost for the oversized street and utilities infrastructure. If Brad, if you'd like to go back to that site plan, in talking with Steve and Greg, in order to develop this area, it's our understanding that if it was just a theater, we may just need potentially an access road into that. But with the development of lots, and we also understand that there may be an, an advantage to the city and plans, not that they're in current development, but in the future of connecting Mulberry and Cedar, this would begin that. It would be a lot more of a road than what we would need to service that. And we'd just ask for your consideration to maybe help us with that because it's, it's a pretty sizable investment. With that, that kind of concludes my presentation. I open it up to any questions that you have and thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Counsel? Russ, Jerry? Have you done any market study to determine whether or not we could have that many theaters and they would be successful?
Very good question. And this is something we were discussing earlier this evening as well. We operate a seven-plex in Spencer, Iowa, I think is about approximately 14,000 people. We find it, seven auditoriums is not enough for us to be able to operate that theater. Due to all sorts of different considerations with studios or in, over Christmas, we're going to have, what, geez, five, six, seven different movies that are released within, what, five or six days? That we find that it's worthwhile, even in our nine-plexes, we're still would like to have additional screens, particularly in this circumstance, and we have two that are going to be VIP auditoriums. We could be playing that in the VIP auditorium, but we'd also be playing it in one of the other eight. So yeah, we, we believe that 10 is a good number. That would be our goal is to get to 10.
Okay. You did not mention 3D compatibility. Is that a part of?
Yes. Currently at the, the four-plex, I think, what are we, two? We have two 3D. But this, this complex will be fully digital and to upgrade to 3D will not be difficult whatsoever. I would guess that you're planning on, what, four or five maybe auditoriums? That'd be-
Five 3D capable. And to give you an idea, just the large screen format, that's over twice as big as anything we have here now. Our largest screen here now is 26 feet wide. So I mean, you're looking at something, that would be smaller than the smallest screen for the theater.
So initially, you wouldn't have the 3D compatibility?
No, it would be right from the beginning.
Yep, we'd have that immediately.
Okay.
But what we found, and I don't- But what we found, and I don't, I'm sorry, I apologize for interrupting. What we've found is people appreciate having the opportunity to go to 3D or not go to 3D. There's a little bit of extra cost, and some people don't enjoy the effects of the 3D. So again, the 10-plex helps us with that. Take, for example, I don't know, Arthur Christmas, Happy Feet would be a good one. Happy Feet, we could play in 3D in one auditorium, and we could play it in 2D in another auditorium to be able to allow our customers to have that choice.
What are you suggesting, uh, it would cost in comparison to the other theaters to go to the VIP theaters?
That we'd have to discuss. This will be our first, um, adventure into the VIP. Um, but there would be a little bit of an upcharge for that auditory. A couple of dollars, maybe, $2, $3. What are you thinking, Brad?
Couple of dollars. It would also be reserved seating.
Yeah.
And when you mentioned food there, what are you, what do you mean by that specifically?
The concession stand will have the traditional dots, popcorn, soda, nachos, pretzels. But the actual kitchen, I think right now we're, we'll have a kitchen that's capable of quite a bit. It'll be a little bit smaller, but what we're looking at is having kind of a small menu at first. Do a few things and do it right. So 12 to 15 items, maybe chicken strips, sliders.
Jerry, I gotta spend your money on that anyway. So what are you asking?
I want people to know what we're proposing here.
You gotta spend money on that here?
I'd go for the popcorn, that's probably.
Just because it's free on Tuesday nights for seniors?
I'm just wondering, uh, at what point do you think you'll have a little bit more specifics on the magnitude of the TIF or? And, and I should say, I, I like anything that, where I see Muscatine Destination that's, always has a nice ring to it.
And that's the advantage of this facility is it's, it's not just a six-plex that's just a theater. You know, that would, us, what, five, six, seven screens would maybe service Muscatine and its population. But the goal, obviously for us and for the community, would be to not only draw Muscatine, but draw anything around Muscatine. And that's where some of these added amenities, you know, if you're borderline and potentially going somewhere else, having this facility will hopefully take out that question. As for financing, we're been working with Steve and Greg, Bill and Greg with one G, to figure out, and, and that's, right now, we're here to propose kind of what we'd like to do. We need to figure out what our budget's going to be, to what level we can do this, and we want to have that conversation with you. I'm not really for sure. We'd have to work with the assessors office to find out what potentially it could be assessed at when it's done. I'm not, I can't answer that at this point.
Okay.
From, from our perspective, I mean, in the short term, we're going to need to, one, again, extend or create a new TIF district, uh, for, for this area to proceed in order to capture that, uh, that revenue. Uh, and to, uh, work with Fridley Theaters to develop a, a rebate agreement and the terms and conditions of that agreement. And I mean, that would be done in the short term, and again, typically, uh, we work with, um, our bond counsel to do that, and those costs are funded by the developer.
What's the, uh, because when you're talking about job, jobs and so forth, some, you said there'd be definitely some full-time. What's the salary range for the full-time personnel at, at a theater?
And that would vary. Obviously, a general manager is going to have the opportunity to make more than any of our others. I mean, uh, the way it would start off is you'd have a general manager of the facility. You're going to have to have some assistant managers. You're going to have to have probably a bar, food, lounge-type manager. So we'd be looking potentially, and I can't say exactly for sure because we'd be working this, but in a nine-plex, we would have, uh, potentially a full-time manager, um, a full-time assistant manager that are on salary. We probably need the same type of thing potentially in the bar. And then other assistants that are helping them would be hourly, but those hourly wages, you know, in, in our industry, they kind of vary. But $9 to $10 an hour, and then the salaried people would be considerably more than that.
That would be good. Good information to have when you come and actually make a presentation for TIF dollars is the, the salaries will average this for 10 people or 12 people or, or whatever would be a good, good idea.
Be happy to put that together. Thank you.
Or at least a range.
A range, at least, something. You know, people bring in a bit, a lot of jobs, and then you find out they're all minimum wage. That's, that's not a big TIF deal.
And that's understandable.
Osama.
Well, I would say I think we failed, first of all, to say thank you for being here, for, uh, the presentation. And second, uh, thanks, uh, Fridley Theaters for, uh, staying in Muscatine. I mean, I, uh, I could, uh, probably guess that you could have picked another, uh, suburb area of Muscatine and, but you decided to stay here, so we are appreciative of that. Second thing here, I, I think it's, uh, it's, uh, an added value to our, uh, young adults here who go to the theater as well as the adults instead of driving 25 miles to the suburb of Muscatine such as the Quad Cities and Iowa City. They will stay here, and that will generate more revenue here, uh, for the city as well. So it's a nice presentation. It's well put, and, uh, we thank you for the efforts. Thanks.
Good things continue to happen in Muscatine.
Thank you.
Diane.
The stadium seating, uh, in that area, would, has that, have you ever rented that out?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Say if there was a play, performance, uh, symphony, nah?
Well, no, that there's, with digital, our options are somewhat endless. Whether, I know a lot of theaters, uh, that bring in alternative content, uh, whether it be the Metropolitan Opera. Um, whether special events can definitely be held there. We'll set it up where there can be, uh, business meetings. We can project basically, I mean, like this, but in a lot larger format, anything onto that screen and then set it up so anyone can use that facility, whether it be for entertainment, whether it be for business, whether it be for alternative content, and that's one also the advantage of going to digital projection.
Sure. Well, I like the presentation. I won't be around to make a final vote, but I hope the council moves forward within, uh, with the zoning and, uh, the TIF issues to assist Fridley Theater. And thank you for being around and staying around. So, thank you.
Okay, anyone else, counsel?
Hi.
Anybody?
I'd just like to say that I, I really liked the look of the presentation. And I would say something that nobody mentioned, but I think this begins to address one of the issues that came up in the National Citizen Survey that I hear so much about that there's nothing to do in Muscatine. I hear that all the time. Uh, I'm not sure I agree with it, but this certainly would be a project that would begin to address that perception, so to speak. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Diana, yeah, oh, Jerry.
Jerry, getting us mixed up? Spare me.
It certainly is an ambitious project. And if I were to stay on the council, I'd be very interested in endorsing it when everything's worked out. But anyway, I forgot a very important question. Is there a 20 to 30 percent senior discount?
We do, we do have a senior discount. Um, I, I'm not for sure exactly what our discount is. It depends on the ticket structure that we put together, but, uh...
Oh, Jerry.
We do have free popcorn on Tuesdays, so definitely come on Tuesdays.
Only if they purchase beer.
Super senior discount.
Okay, counsel. We're getting a little far afield here. Anybody else? Any other thing? What do you need?
Thank you.
I, I don't think we need anything right now, but, um, looking forward to proceeding with, uh, Fridley Theaters.
Now, Bill, you still wish to speak?
Thank you, mayor. I would, the Chamber guy can only be so quiet. Uh, Brian Fridley and I have been working on this for a long, long time. Uh, again, Osama, thank you for thanking, uh, Fridley Theaters for being here for almost 30 years. That's a long, long time. We've got businesses that have come and gone many, many times in that amount of time. Think about you being the Chamber or you being the city council that established an entertainment facility in this community. I'd like to walk away with that if I had, if I was on city council. How'd you like to be the mayor that does that? How'd you like to be the people that allow the families of our community to not have to worry about their kids going to the movie? Driving from here to the Quad Cities or Iowa City to our suburb towns. How about being able to go out with your own family and maybe attracting some additional restaurants? Not that I don't love every restaurant we have, but we are missing, uh, some, uh, opportunities with additional restaurants. Wouldn't it be nice to be able to go out to dinner and go to a show and be home 20 minutes after the show's over? Wouldn't it be great to have our great industries in our community be able to access this? Maybe large and small businesses, as far as that's concerned, and civic groups too. They may actually have a facility that they could access. And I know the Fridley Organization is certainly taking that under consideration. You guys are going to have the opportunity, and the new ones coming in, the new mayor, are going to have the new opportunity to make that happen in our community. And like the old mayor, the outgoing mayor says, this could be one of those great things happening in our community. So I'd appreciate any consideration you would give it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Bill. Nothing else, Greg? You have what you need?
Yes, your honor.
Okay. Thank you very much, counsel. No further questions. We will move on. All right, next item, airport lease land update. Steve?
Thank you, mayor. Over the last several months, through discussions with the Airport Advisory Commission and in-house and in consideration of budgets and some other things, we have had occasion to revisit our current leases with the, um, farmers at the, uh, at the airport. And our leases are out of date, and it is time to renew those. So with that in mind, we embarked on a endeavor to get some new leases put together, discuss some options. And I wanted to present that to you tonight before we got too far and see whether or not counsel is supportive of where we are and wish us to proceed. I've given you two maps tonight just to kind of orient you, but, uh, the first map, the, essentially the one that's black and white that has, uh, the boundary on it, the colored boundary and some outlines in color, reflects the existing airport and the areas that we cannot do any farming in, the areas that are reserved for clear zones that must be mowed. And the area surrounded by the purple, it's otherwise white, is the area that we can use for agriculture. Now, if you look at the big aerial map, it shows you currently how that property is being used. With the new GIS information, we were able to take the assessors' records and our records and, and the aerial photography and come closer to identifying appropriately what was being farmed and what was not being farmed at the airport. As you all know, if we generate income from that property, we have to pay taxes on it. So it's important that we pay our fair share, but that we are able to define what that fair share is. And so this effort also plays into that process. Essentially, what you have before you, the multicolored aerial, shows the configuration of active, what I call, cash crops. There are other crops, there are other things grown at the airport, principally rye. But the rye is not a cash crop. It's used as ground cover. And we have removed that from the cash consideration as far as rent. And, uh, quite frankly, the reason we're doing that is because the rye has no value except for ground cover. They harvest it and they use it to hold it, hold down the soils and other farm property they have. Has no cash value, and frankly, if they weren't using it for that purpose, we'd be mowing it. So it's saving us the cost of having to maintain that real estate. So it, it's actually a benefit to the city that they are doing that. So we, we sat down and talked with the current tenant down there, which is actually Barton Hagan Farms. And Barton Hagan Farms are long-term Muscatine Island farmers, the family, it's gone several generations. We go back to the mid-'90s with them. They have been good stewards of the property down at the airport. They are familiar with the rules and regulations of the FAA. As many of you know, a lot of the equipment down there is sensitive to other metallic type of equipment being around it. So when you're down there with harvesting and planting, you have to know where you're at so you don't disrupt some of that equipment for the aviation community. And, and you have to keep your clear zones, and crops have to be certain heights at certain distances and those kinds of things. These, these folks know that. They, they understand it. They get it, that we need to keep the gates closed and the other things as they come in and out of there. So they have been good, they have been good tenants, um, and they have been reasonable to work with, been very fair. But we, we sat down and worked through the lease, and I am proposing with counsel's permission to amend a lease with a new rate with these folks for an additional period of years, which does require a public hearing, and I would approach counsel with a resolution to set the public hearing, and you'd act on the lease following the public hearing at two meetings from this next Thursday. The lease we've currently negotiated with them, the one they have now, they pay $13,500 a year for rent on that ground down there. We have used a number of vehicles to determine a fair rate on that. Part of that is what we call CSR, which is corn suitability rating. It's kind of a overall, uh, measuring stick for what you, what the, the property would bear. We also used their farm yields, what they've got traditionally over the last several years, good and bad, to see what kind of yields they were getting out of there. We use Department of Agriculture guidelines, and we also use the State of Iowa survey for crop values in our Region 6, which is the area in southeastern Iowa that we're in, and Muscatine is referenced in there. So all of those were used in our discussions with these folks. And if you'll note on there, there's one circular area, uh, that says VOR, that blue area essentially, I think, on the, on the multicolored map. That is the irrigated property down there. The rest of this has no irrigation. So it's left to what happens during the year. And, and any of you that are familiar with the island area know that it can take a lot of rain, and it does take a lot of rain to keep the crops in pretty decent shape. Otherwise, it drains away pretty quickly and, and the, the end result is the, the harvest isn't as good as sometimes you'd like it to be. But the irrigated property is pretty decent, and that's the area that's identified as seed corn. That's what they grow in. They're a higher-value crop. We have looked at other irrigation fields down there that has not been received with FAA with any support. They don't want any additional metallic interference with the equipment down there. So the short of this is, we're looking at an increase in their rent that they have agreed to, if counsel is willing to consider it, to go from the 13, current $13,500, and we've negotiated the annual rent to $32,000. And that is what I propose to bring back to counsel. Works out to about 120-some dollars an acre rent. That's what I'd like to, that's what I'd like to bring back to you. But again, we would have to have a, a resolution at the next meeting. I propose that at the 15th to have a public hearing on the lease amendment and the change in the fee schedule. If, the other option here frankly is, if you are not happy with that and would choose to go out, you certainly have the right to go out for bids and bid this. And I'm guessing you might be able to get a little better price. I'm not sure you'd get as, as good a tenant as we've enjoyed down there. So with, with that in mind, I, I guess I'm open to questions that you may have. I think we've done a fair job trying to negotiate what I consider to be a reasonable agreement that there's, they can support and that we can support.
Do you have to, because we're city council, do you have to go out for bids? Obviously, you don't, or you would have considered that.
You have an existing lease. You can extend that lease, and I'm proposing to amend the existing lease to reflect the current FAA rules and regulations with respect to clear zones and to modify the amount that we charge for that for a new 10-year period. You, you can do that without. If you were going to say we were no longer going to have these folks as our leaseholders, then I believe you have an obligation to go out.
Okay.
If that helps you.
Yeah.
What was the date of the current lease again?
1997 was the last one, and it was for a 10-year period, so it actually expired in '07. But there's a continuation clause in there, and frankly, everybody knows we had some adjustments in personnel and some other things, and we're, we're finally getting there. We're playing catch-up on a lot of this. But this is actually the final piece of the puzzle. You remember, we did the FBO and the, and the maintenance agreements and the other agreements we have at the airport, so we, we now have those all current. This is the final piece of the puzzle, frankly, one of the goals and objectives for my department for this year.
And what's the proposed period of time for the new lease?
Well, I, it will be another 10. Well, it will be another 10, but it can be whatever council favors. We are going to emphasize an annual review with the farmer, and I want to be clear about that. If they have an exceptionally poor year, we want to come back to council and ask them to consider that. And if they can demonstrate that poor year, and they can, by what they report. And by the same token, if they have an exceptionally good year, we'd like to also talk about that. But I'm talking about some pretty big ranges here. I think generally, we would support that existing rate with an annual review. And if council wants to raise it or they think it's low, that we would negotiate that yearly. We can do that.
Council, further questions?
Could this acreage be sold off?
No. Actually, part of that has been acquired through the Water Pollution Control Plant. And they would share in this revenue from the increase in the rate. But we bought, you'll remember, a few years ago, we actually acquired more ground there called the Building Restriction Line, which allows us to control the airspace coming in and out of the airport so that we can make sure vegetation doesn't reach a certain height and those kinds of things. That's the reason there's these severe limitations on what happens inside that fence, frankly.
Thank you.
Yes, Jerry? Well, certainly presently, the corn and soybean market prices have been soaring. I don't know, that's part of what you took into account, right, the market?
Correct.
It's kind of hard to judge, I guess. But the questions or comments, anybody?
I think it's exceptional, three, it's almost three times what we're currently getting. It should have probably been reviewed earlier. And like you said, because of staffing and so forth, it kind of slipped. And if we review it every year or even every five years, it's good for both Muscatine and the farmer. Because farmers under some major limitations down there on what they can do and when they can do it. So I think it's an excellent, excellent dollar amount, and I bring it, look forward to having it come to council.
What do you need, Greg? Consensus, anything?
No, nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing?
Yeah, if council generally concurs, then I intend to bring a resolution back at the next meeting to set a public hearing to consider the lease, which you'll all have a copy of. But that's where it's pointed, and I just wanted to see whether that was acceptable to you, if we move that forward.
It is.
I think it's good, very good.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much, Steve. All right, council, it is time for council comments. We'll start on Mar.
Thank you, Mayor. The presentation that we received this evening from Fridley Theaters touched on the topic of keeping business in Muscatine. And on that note, and with Christmas less than three weeks away, I think this is a good time to just remind folks that we have some good shops and good businesses here in Muscatine. And I just remind you to try and keep your business here in Muscatine, shop Muscatine, do your Christmas shopping here. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Bill?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Okay, Scott?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Osama?
We have nothing tonight, thank you, Your Honor.
Diane?
Nothing, the mayor, mayor, thank you.
Jerry? I'm saving up for next week. Sure, save it up. Jerry, you'll give at least two, three minutes. No problem.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. I don't think we're going to have the corn for next week.
Greg, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Nothing? Just want to mention that Bob Bynum is not with us. Bob has been a bit under the weather. He's been in the hospital, and he's home and he's recovering, but he has been a bit under the weather. So Bobby, hurry on back. We don't like those vacant chairs. So I have nothing else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Your Honor.
Council is adjourned.